Since I brought some.
I show it's 5:30. We'll call the August 4th, 2025 City Council of Cresco, Iowa meeting to order roll call.
Herman.
President.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from July 18th, 2025 work session, approval of minutes from July 21st, 2025, approval of Class B retail alcohol license to QuickTrip Inc., DBA QuickStar 428, approval of pay request number 11 final for $17,838.87 to Generation X LLC for the 7th Street West Reconstruction Project, approval of pay request number five for the Blazek Corporation for the wastewater treatment plant age-related equipment replacement project for $190,742.30, approval of pay request number three for $36,229.49 to Dave's complete construction for the scene shop project.
So moved. A point of order is 299, not 229?
Well, you know.
Just in case, it has to be legal. Second.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Staff reports public works.
Sewer projects coming along fine, on schedule. I believe the new building is pretty much complete, or the, it's not a building, I guess it's more of a rough over the digestors. Storm sewers have been kind of a key point since the last meeting. We fixed, the one by Subway is done and that, that kind of collapsed, so we had to fix that one up at the end of 2nd Street here and 8th Avenue East. We had an issue there last summer, fall, I think it was, and they fixed that this last couple of weeks. We also found a new issue on 4th Avenue East, kind of west of the fitness centers. Somebody was mowing the lawn and the yard kind of dipped down right at the curb and here it had been undermining from the storm sewer into, around the collection box and into the, into the storm sewer there. And got some pictures from inside the storm sewer. It was man-made. We don't know how old it is. It goes at a diagonal from here up to pretty much East Park. It appears to go under some homes maybe. So we've got CIT coming, they're going to come next week. We're going to televise this part because this always does plug up down here, so we're going to see if there's something we can learn there and then get going that way. They can tell us where the storm sewer is and they'll give us a report on what they find.
Has the whole storm sewer system ever been videoed?
No, so that's something we've kind of talked about. It probably should be a CIP thing.
It was on the CIP last year. I think we estimated 500, 600,000 just for the televising of it.
Wow.
And I just saw today on our GIS site that shows all the water and storm and sewer pipes. It has an estimated footage for water sewer and storm. And storm's a lot less than sewer, so if that's accurate, we can almost come up with a, with a cost on what it would take. So I'm, I'm hoping it's accurate because it's a lot less footage. Some of the stuff is brand new, but we might still do it, I shouldn't say brand new, but really pretty new. You know, up in the Malik addition, out in Webster's, it'd be newer stuff, but when we televised the sewer last few years, they found issues with the new stuff too. So we'll kind of play that one as it goes. There's a couple of guys from CIT that came here last week and they kind of understand what's going on. So we did have an interview, Mike and I did, Mike Born, with Dan Evans' brother from the newspaper. He came out to the wastewater plant and took some notes and pictures, so I expect that to be in the newspaper pretty soon. Keep an eye out for it. Last thing I've got tonight, we've had a request for some handicap parking, maybe take one out, maybe add one, and I'm just wondering how you want to proceed with something like that. When North Elm, when we did the sidewalks there, apparently there was a committee through the chamber, Jason told me, of the business committee, and I don't know who was all part of it. I wasn't. I don't know if any of you were. And they kind of showed or decided where the handicap spots were going to be. Typically they're by a crosswalk, and we used to have a lot more of them than we do now. But there's one over here in front of the, the new apartments in the church there that's in front of a residential. They would like that removed, and I know there's a business one or two downtown that would like one back. So I don't know if, how would you like me to proceed with that, or leave it up to Jason and the retail committee or business committee, I think he called it?
If they wouldn't have a problem, I mean, determining where they want it, and it's all legal, it's all, you know, I mean, get the approval through WHKS. Remember the question that was asked when we did Main Street was, are we putting in the right number of handicap spots?
Right.
They said, exactly.
Yeah.
The other side of it too is having an ADA compliant entrance adjacent to the handicap spot was a concern too.
Yeah.
From back, back then when the, when the downtown sidewalk project was.
Currently them are all on accessible areas.
Yes.
Yeah.
So to add one probably isn't that going to.
If it's by an alley maybe?
I mean, I can tell you the one.
Alley, it had to be at a certain angle. That's why it wasn't.
Is that why it wasn't put back?
I can tell you the one that people ask me about and probably a year ago, right after those sidewalks are finished, and I didn't get a good answer, but is, there used to be one right in front of Angie's Hairstyle. And from personal experience, I can tell you that's really useful because a lot of the ladies go there, they can navigate something that's maybe not exactly handicapped accessible, but coming from up the street is not going to work for them. So they, I think they're one of the ones who would really like to have that spot back again, and it was used a lot for those ladies.
It also was on the ladies.
Huh?
Most of it was.
Yeah.
I would think, I wouldn't have no problem with that myself because I know that.
Well, maybe what we need to do is just look to see what the legality is between having a handicap spot that's not adjacent to an ADA compliant ramp, if the liability falls on the city then, or if it's otherwise. Because that really is what it comes down to is, are we liable if we do that or?
Definitely get the input from Chamber.
Right, and the Chamber, and I've talked with Scott Honecky about it too, and yeah, so I mean, yeah, I guess whatever, whatever he thinks best, I'll move forward doing that, so.
It sounds like maybe the, the retail people should make some recommendations.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if we had the retail group make some recommendations and we knew where, where the requests were, then we could take it to WHKS, find out what the liability is, and then go from there. Because the last thing we want to do is put something in where somebody could potentially be harmed.
Right. And end up taking it back out.
Yeah.
Although, I mean, for instance, in the spot in front of Angie's, there's a question, are they going to be harmed more by parking further away and trying to navigate the, although I understand the liability thing, but we know where they're going. I think there were a couple of other places that the people asked for. But yeah, I'd like to hear what they want. And the one by the old church, is that on the side street? Is that on 3rd Avenue?
Yeah, so right at this intersection here by Bill Meyer's, the Old County Store, the Methodist Church, and the Old Baptist Church, there's five spots right there that are handicap. And of course, the one church now is apartment, so it's, it's, it's not a church, not a business, and I don't, you know, so that's, that's the one on the south side that was, that Brady asked if we would take that out, so. Because then he's got more room for his people to park, so. But yeah, I can talk with Jason and then Scott and we can, I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, thanks Dave. Police.
Really nothing too exciting on July's report. Just going to go ahead and put a plug in for tomorrow night, we have National Night Out at Fairgrounds, so that's for 4:08. Sam's kind of in charge of it, he can explain some of the things that they're going to put on there.
Yeah, so we're having.
Hey, Sam, do you want to come up to the podium here, so? We know you have a face for radio, but still.
Yeah. So this year, it's pretty similar to the two years ago. We're having the circus again that Chambers putting on, or getting here. We're going to have our foam blaster, it's absolute science out of Dubuque. They're going to be coming up, they're hopefully have us all around through it again. It was fun when we did it two years ago, and hopefully we can get another good picture out of that. We have Dean Liktad is our DJ. He's graciously offered and accepted to take care of us for that. Fun part of that, we also have Jelly Jumps from Rochester coming to bring down all their inflatables. We got a 40-foot and a 24-foot obstacle course. I think it's a 24-foot high slide, inflatable slide. We're going to have the dump tank as well as like a foam Velcro ax throwing little thing, so kids can hopefully take out their little frustrations, you know, with what they have. And throw a few of those at that little board there. We also have Next Gen, I, or I think it's Next Gen Gaming here from Cresco as well, so that's going to be exciting. We're going to have a demonstration from Howard County Sheriff's Office with their K-9, our , our K-9, he's on vacation right now, so we're just going to utilize theirs as well since they're a part of this community as well. And at that, I think that's pretty much all that out of the fire, and EMS should be there as well. So I'm going to talk to some troopers tonight to see if they're having anybody available to come as well and set. Oh yeah, and our dump tank, we're, for the police department, we also have two of our guys doing it. Chief Roan's doing it as well as Officer, as Officer Rush. We tried getting the mayor to do it, but he didn't want to for whatever reason. But yeah, that's, that's kind of what we got going on there. It's, the proceeds for the dump tank are going to help towards the scene shop, so it's going to a good cause. I know two years ago, I believe we did it to the band, correct? To the high school band, so we try to do it to the community and, and help out where we can with what projects they're having. And I believe that's about it. We tried to get crazy on it, and then I got, I don't know if you all saw, but I'm trying to put all the little gift bags together, and that's a fun little project for me to be doing tonight. So sunglasses, first aid kits, coloring books, glow-in-the-dark wristbands, so some fun stuff for all the kids to come out and, and get. So, and it's all free.
So are you in charge of inflating the chief's water wings?
I might have to. Yeah, well, I think he's tall enough, but don't, yeah, he might, he might.
And the date is again, what?
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow night.
Yes, tomorrow 4:08.
4 o'clock to 8 o'clock?
Yeah, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I believe there's two circus shows that they're doing, and then we got a few demonstrations that we're going to try to do in between there. I know, I kind of talked to Chief Buck today, I think we're going to try to get the drone out there and try to do, some of these those fancy attachments that they have, so that way one, our guys can get a little bit more practice, and two, just kind of show off some of the fun little tools that we got along the way.
Thank you for all your work on that. That's like.
I lost a lot of hair over it. Yeah, it's, I hope it's all good, and I hope, hope to see everybody there. And yeah, like I said, everything is, is free to go to, I believe, other than circus might cost money, I believe. I'm not sure how much. And then the dump tank obviously is for donations to help toward the scene shop.
Awesome.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sam.
Administration.
The auditors are here this week. The first day to file the election papers is August 11th. And just a reminder that the goal-setting open house is August 12th from 4:00 to 7:00 at Castle Lodge. That's all I got.
That's the final day, August 11th?
Nope, that's the first day to file. I believe the final date is September 18th, I believe.
Great. Thanks Nikki. Committee updates.
Well, speak a little for the theater. The theater commission did not meet this month, but they had their very successful play. Hopefully everybody went to see it. It was done extremely well. They put a lot of hard work into it. The actors were great, the music was great, the turnout was great, and I think there was over 100 people involved with it. And this was not a one-day commitment. This isn't where you volunteer to help on something Saturday or something like that. The people worked on it for months and months. So it was good to see a good turnout, and they were raising money for the scene shop, and I'm sure they raised a lot of money because they sold out at least one night, and they did about four performances, and like I say, they did a super job. I saw people there from all over, so it brought a lot of people in.
Great news. If there's nothing else, we'll go on to comments from the audience. This section's for anything not pertaining to any agenda items. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name, your address, and your comment.
Lucas and Julian Merritt, Hawkeye Sanitation. We just wanted to get some clarification on the, the permit aspect of parking on the ordinance that's frustrating us today, I believe.
Yeah.
Specifically pertaining to downstairs.
Oh, that's not part of this ordinance.
Okay.
We're, we're talking about it, and that, that'll be a separate thing.
We haven't got that far.
Yeah.
When we do, when we do get into that though, we would obviously like to bring you guys in to understand and know everything, and we're collectively on that, so we don't surprise you with anything, and we make sure to come up with a resolution that works for everyone.
Okay.
So we don't need to pull the rug out from underneath you.
Because we, I mean, we were out that day, and I know you mentioned, you mentioned Alcatraz does it, and that's, you know, if, if that works in Alcatraz and it works here, if that's what the council decides, you know, that.
I'm not sure if Alcatraz does it or not. We, we don't have any.
They do.
Do they have dumpster roll-offs there, you mean, or dumpsters?
No, the, the permit aspect. I'm not sure if they do in the city or not.
They do. My worry is that it would just, I'm not unaware of any, in the 20-plus years that I've been doing this, I've never been aware of anybody running into one of our dumpsters or any incident where something's happened with one on the side of the road. We usually put out cones, and I think it's just going to add a threshold. My worry is that it's going to add a financial threshold that people have to meet to be able to get service from us. And for people that don't have a driveway or something like that, I just think that it's going to add a lot of issues that way. Obviously, we should work on the length of time. We, we, it's our opinion that that would be beneficial, that we maybe put a time limit on how long we can have it, or that we would be willing to help with, with doing it. Obviously, it's your decision to make whether or not that goes through or not, but I'm just thinking that it's going to add a lot of, a burden onto our customers to, for the threshold of getting one.
Okay.
Question for you guys. On the back of the dumpsters, they have reflective tape up in the corners, transportation tape on the.
Yeah, they, they should have it in the top corners of each side.
Top corners of each side?
Yeah.
Okay. And then when, for clarification, when you take a dumpster to a customer, is there a weekly charge, a daily charge?
So for standard dumpsters, for the rearload garbage trucks, there's not a daily charge. They can have it up to six weeks, and then it either needs to be serviced or removed.
But the roll-offs, there is a?
The roll-offs, there is a daily fee, Monday through Friday. No weekends, no holidays. And whenever they call and say, hey, we need it removed, if we don't get there for two days, they're not charged for those days.
So when they rent a dumpster, it's good for six weeks? Are they renting it, or do they just, you bring it and then they, you charge them a tipping?
They're renting it, and then we charge based on the size of dumpster that they get.
And just to clarify, when you say dumpster versus roll-off, we have a dumpster out back here, it's got wheels on it.
Yes.
So all dumpsters have wheels?
That's not really, it's the truck that picks them up.
Okay.
So rearload truck, rearload trucks with an angle, those are dumpsters.
Yep.
And roll-offs are from a roll-off truck.
Roll-off truck, so.
So dumpsters, we consider two, three, four, and six cubic yard dumpsters.
I think there's one up here now, right, at the church?
The, and I guess we have a couple of one and a half's. So one and a half's, twos, and threes all have wheels, but fours and sixes do not. And that's a OSHA compliance thing. You can't have something that large with that much weight on it, you know, able to be moved around like that. So fours and sixes do not have casters on them, and then the roll-off boxes, all of those are so big that, you know, they don't have.
Okay, okay.
So is there a flat fee to rent those, and then a dumping fee later?
Nope, it's just one flat fee to rent it. You fill it up and we call and remove it.
So it doesn't matter how much they put in it? They pay that fee, you come pick it up?
Well, they can't overfill it, fill it up. But we encourage people to get what they need based on that. And it can, roll-offs that we do with the weight because we can weigh it. On a rearload dumpster, there's no way to weigh it efficiently. There's no weighable thing on the truck with the cable. It goes in with everybody else's garbage. It gets mixed in and goes to landfill. So some of those we win on, some of those we lose on depending on the weight. If somebody fills it with stuff that's really, really heavy, and it gets rained on, it's, it just is what it is.
So that roll-off, what do they do? Weigh that when they go to the landfill?
There's a trip fee, that's our fee, and then whenever the landfill charges us, we take that ticket and add it on to theirs. So they're paying for their weight on the roll-off. But that's a much larger, that's a much larger.
In essence, we have the daily fee and then our just hauling fee to take it there. And then, like you said, the tonnage ticket from the landfill just gets passed on to the customer.
So right now, if somebody rents a dumpster and put it out in front, there's no incentive for them to take it out of there up until six weeks? I mean, it's going to cost them to say, if it sits there a week or six weeks?
It just depends on the project. Some people, if they're doing like a whole, you know, huge restoration on their house and they're doing it by themselves, it might take, you know, substantial time to do. And they don't want a huge roll-off sitting in their driveway or what have you, so they'll have like a three-yard or four-yard dumpster that's manageable, but they can work on their, their house in a timely manner, and then just get it emptied as opposed to having a huge pile that sits there for a long period of time.
So, excuse me, so I've emailed out four examples I found to everybody. Would it be something then at the next meeting, we make that an agenda item and discuss those? And maybe have these guys come back, or?
I, I think if, realistically, to make the best use out of everyone's time, if Julian and Lucas would be open to it, why don't the three of you get together, read through what, what you've found, and then we can present something formal to the council saying, Hawkeye has recommended this, and that we can go through and, and make, if there's any edits that need to be made, we can make them, and then we can take it back to Hawkeye and make sure that it's right in what we're, what we're asking, and it will work for them. I mean, that's the biggest thing, is making sure that we're not, we're not making it possible for them to do business, and it's going to benefit the, the taxpayers too, so.
I think this year is, I more have noticed more things on the street than normal. It's not going to, it's not really going to affect us too, too bad. And it will affect us, but it's not.
It's, we're really just concerned about just another step for customers to have to jump through to get the service. That's really it. And with that step, you know, are people going to want to, you know, come down here and, you know, pay X amount or whatever, or maybe not have to pay at all for a permit, but you know, it's just another thing.
And maybe it's something that if the council's agreeable to, that we can work collectively, just like we do with our regular garbage pickups and, and everything else, whether we handle it through what's being billed through the water bill or whatever it may be, so that we can, we can work together on it. And I think that's the biggest thing here, is that we work together with you guys, so.
But, but just to be clear, I mean, when we were originally talking about some kind of permit fee, it just seems like some of them sit there forever and ever. They can sit in the driveway for as long as they want, but in the street, I mean, that's where we're going. We're trying, obviously everyone understands you need it in the street sometimes, but lordy, it doesn't have to become permanent decoration.
Some of them sit there three months or longer, that's a.
When I say I've been noticing them longer, I, I couldn't tell you, but I think that it has something to do with the wait times on, there's, there's less people doing that type of work. The threshold to get there is a lot more expensive. I know I've had, had contractors come to my house and they might be six months late.
Yeah.
Or I'm doing something by myself and it takes, it takes a lot longer.
Just waiting for everything.
Yeah, yeah, or being able to purchase things. So it's, it's, it definitely has changed over the last.
And we want to give a timeframe on, on how long it can be on the street?
Because we don't, we don't want them sitting yet. Obviously, we, we don't know how many dumpsters that we need for any given situation if they're all out for months at a time. That's not something that we want, so we, because we need to be able to turn them around to be able to make profit, have profit at some point in time. So we don't want that situation either. But that's where something, where maybe we can give them a finite amount of time before they have to come out and then they have to reorder it. I don't know how that works.
Can that be something that we could work through on this ordinance, whether we, you know, if it, if a receptacle is placed in a street, then this example or, or whatever, we can get really specific with that so that we can make sure that, again, we do something that works for everyone involved.
So just to be clear, if I were to call you and ask you for a dumpster, let's say, how long would it take for you to get it to my house, or this?
It'd, it'd.
Okay, so there's no reason for them to say, oh, well, I'm going to need a dumpster in six weeks, but I better order it now?
Some people do, and then sometimes.
Depends on the situation for a contractor.
We have had times this year where we don't have anything available, and they're like, we, we want something now so they're not getting exactly what they want. We, we just don't know. But we, we order dumpsters every year, or we have ordered dumpsters over here. We don't like to do that, but we have been lately because of the rate of them just
Sitting.
Not, not, yeah, sitting and not.
Just deteriorating.
Not, not in use.
Yeah.
We got to find a happy medium for that, for all parties, because, you know, everybody understands what you're going through, but to take a, a unit like that and leave it sit in, in an intersection for three, four months?
Right.
You know, that gets to be a little extreme, so.
So we'll get, we'll get together with you, and we'll, Dave, Dave can discuss what, what he's found, and then we can work through something to give to council. Council, we, we make sure that you saw it beforehand and make sure that there's no problems with it, so.
Okay, absolutely.
And just to clarify, it's not just your customers, it would be any dumpster, any roll-off, no matter where it came from.
If it's ordinance, it'd be any commercial hauler.
And we're just, we're just working with Hawkeye because they're our local, so.
Dave, I'll work with you on that. I want to, because, I mean, I know what you were saying, that like, you don't want it where there's a dumpster sitting on, affects the business, but it only takes one accident, they sue us, and then we're in trouble.
Like I said, on the standard dumpsters, we don't get a time charge. It's just, here's the dumpster, you can have it for up to six weeks. So we want a faster turnaround.
Sure.
So, I mean, we're in agreement there, but.
Yeah, you're not making money on storage, being a storage unit.
Right. But just some instances where.
We're just worried about the ones where it's, where it's unavoidable and then saying that this is not fair for us because we don't have a access to a driveway or, you know, corner lots that don't have, have significant parking or, because some of them are quite large. And we don't like, we don't like placing it over the sidewalk because then the sidewalk cracked it. They don't really have a realistic, people don't have a realistic of how much this truck weighs, and we can't tell how, it may, it could weigh double what it actually weighs when it comes or leaves.
Sure.
But then you got.
But that way, we were talking, that was the reasoning kind of for the permit, because that way, if somebody was coming to complain about it, at least we could say, well, they don't have a driveway to put it into it. They came in and got a permit, so that way we knew about it.
Yeah.
And then we could give them an estimate, hey, it's, they're supposed to have it for two weeks versus, we don't know how long it's going to be there. And if they need to extend it, I think council is kind of open to it extending it, just then they're communicating with us as to how long it should be there.
Yeah.
So do you have any idea, the one up at the church up here, how long that'll be there?
I have no idea. They, they keep paying to re-up, but I'm not sure how long it's planning to. planning to be there.
I haven't seen anybody working there either, but maybe they are.
That one has been there.
Yeah, so, okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
All right. If there are no more comments, we'll go on to new business. Item number one, motion to change September first council meeting date to Wednesday, September third, 2025 due to the holiday.
So moved.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Item number two, recommendation of the park board to reappoint Chelsea Ho- Hovden for the term of three years expiring 6/30/2028.
Well, I move on that one.
Second.
Roll call.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Item number three, recommendation of park board to appoint Matt Johnson for a term of three years expiring 6/30/2028.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Greener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Item number four, review board of adjustment applications.
So the board of adjustment, um, I went back up to last summer when I was at a planning and zoning meeting in Decora and they talked for about 10 seconds about how board of adjustments were appointed. And I reached out to Bill Goldie and board of adjustments don't recommend their own appointments. It should be strictly up to the council is what he said. So I'm not sure how it was done in the past, I guess, but that's, that's what he says that needs to be done, board of adjustment. Board of adjustment has the final say-so and stuff. The planning and zoning and potentially some of the other committees make recommendations. So we've got three applicants. Um, and you see them in the list there. Amy Dolan Govern is the chair of the board. Bob Story's been on the board since last summer as, as a replacement for somebody. Let me get down to the applications here.
Those were the only ones I remember.
I'm sorry?
Those were the only ones I remember reading.
No, there's a third one there.
Sarah Zach.
Yep.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay.
Yep, and then, and a new one from Sarah Zach. So, um, yeah, Amy's, or, uh-
Emily.
Emily's in her last, last, um, term that she'll be available unless the code changes. Um, she does a great job. Bob Story's a retired attorney. He does a great job on there. They, and the meetings that we've had, which are very few, um, they, they dig into everything and, and go visit the sites and so on, so.
Wasn't Emily on before or was that planning and zoning?
She's been on this board.
Okay, yeah.
This is her third time, I believe, third time, so however many years that is, yeah. But no, they do great jobs.
I'll make a motion to appoint Emily. Is that, are, are we doing them all at once?
All seconded.
They would be separate.
All seconded, yours.
Roll call.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Greener.
Yep.
Item number six, motion to appoint a board member to the board of adjustment for a term of three years expiring 6/30/2028.
So I'll, I'll, I'll appoint, uh, Bob Story.
Second.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Item number seven, discuss sewer septic receiv-
Wait a minute, so we missed the third one.
There's only two options.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Then I missed it, so we're skipping. Okay, fine. Sorry.
So the, the next one, okay, hang on. I think I got it. And I just found out about this today. I didn't know, Mike, and I think you were talking about it, but Mike's brought it up before at, um, budget time about accepting waste from, uh, like Ness and, and those people that do, um, septic tank cleaning, things like that. And, um, when I talked to Mike this morning about it, they did a trial run with Ness last week. They, I know one of the loads was like 4,800 gallons from, uh, farm septic systems and they, they dump it in the, um, out there and, and he said everything went fine. Um, he said they're not going to take everything that, um, everybody has to offer and, and I forget the fee that you guys came up with.
So we did based on Lansing's and I guess if you guys are okay with it and okay with this fee, it would be on the next council meeting as a resolution because that's where we have our rate set. So what I charged them this time is based off Lansing. So I charged them a flat $60.25 for the base charge and then I charged them the rural sewer charge, which is 22.32 per thousand gallons.
How much?
So it's 22.32 per thousand. So this last time they did it was just shy of $200.
He's been, he's been pushing that for a while. He thinks that there's potential and I have to almost agree with him. Now, this would be located at the facility, correct?
Right, and he wouldn't actually be building anything. It would just be based on what they currently have and it's individual loads. So if he's got something coming in that he thinks is going to possibly give him issues, he has a right to reject it.
Right. As he, and I'm knowing Mike, he's probably done his homework. He's checked with different guys already and, and we have half a dozen of these in this area.
Potentially. I think, you know, the, like Ness, um, does outhouses for events.
Yep.
I don't think we would be taking that stuff necessarily. Um, but there, you know, there could be others too because not many places around do that. I think Mike said it took him, they took about 15 minutes for the 4,800 gallons to dump. And of course, he's there with them, so we have to consider that, I guess, under his expensive part of it. But, um, I don't know how often it's going to happen. It's not going to happen every day. It might not happen every week.
If we had any situations illegal dumping, I heard several years ago that somebody was caught with a pumper truck dumping into, uh, the sanitary sewer.
I have not heard that. I know we've got, where do we have, uh, we have a spot where you can dump your camper?
Fairgrounds, I believe.
Fairgrounds, is there another one? There used to be one at Kessel maybe and that one's gone, but, you know, so, I mean, that's, that's a freebie for people.
Yeah, they, uh, there's no, there's no charge for that, is there?
No. No.
There doesn't seem to be much reason to not do this.
Yeah.
Mike's okay with it.
Yep.
Right. So I mean, it's, it's not any extra expense for us. Um, I know originally when he talked about it, they were talking about possibly having to engineer, um, a certain area for it to drop them into and everything, but he said with what we currently have, there's no extra cost.
I'd say that's a go.
And with our flat fee, do we cover Mike's time if it were to be 15, 20 minutes?
Mm-hmm, yep. Because we would only do it during business hours, so there's no overtime and yes, that definitely covers it.
So it's 260, the rate you're saying, or the other 280 or?
He didn't mention if there's any of these in any other towns that do this?
He said Lansing.
I know Lansing does it, yeah.
But they're not going to drag the Lansing from Howard County.
Well, they have been, but I think they were starting to realize that's kind of far to go.
Yeah, if they don't impact our system and it keeps our, our bacteria and stuff.
He said something, you know, sometimes it might bring in new bugs, which is okay sometimes too. So he did some testing before and after they dumped and everything was fine with the, with the BODs and stuff, so.
He, does he pre-test that then? Did he say, Nikki, before he actually dumps?
He did this time. I don't know if he would every time, but he did. I know, did they dump twice?
They did do twice, yeah.
Okay.
That might be something that we asked Mike about too, is pre-testing, post-testing and everything.
Well, there might be more of this than you think. I can remember talking to this Ness guy over in Waukano over there and then he was telling me the various towns that he could dump and how much they charge him and all that stuff. So it's done fairly frequently. And if it doesn't work out, we just say no.
Cut it off.
Yep.
I guess I'd be curious why all systems don't do it. For instance, did Decora accept it?
I don't think so.
And why would they not accept it? What, what's, what, I guess I would ask you to ask Decora, what's their reason for not accepting it?
Right.
And it might be as simple as they think about it.
Inconvenience.
Yeah.
But if that's the only one, then that's fine. But if, I, if they have another reason, I guess I'd like to know it.
I would think that as, as astute as Mike is with that sewer out there, and I mean, he's all over the top of that, and I can't believe that he would set himself up for something. And that, I know he's been approached by these guys that clean out septic tanks locals around here, so.
And I know he doesn't want to open it to everybody. He wants control out of each and every load.
Yeah, it's nothing wrong with that.
So if it's a load that he thinks he's going to have issues with, he just, nope.
Exits.
Right.
And generates revenue.
He can kind of set up the terms, you know? He could tell those guys, hey, you got to call an hour or two ahead of time so we know when you're coming and, you know, stuff like that. But certainly worth a try, I think.
Yep.
Are you guys okay with the rate that I used? I mean, do you guys think it should be higher?
If he's done his homework and he's checked around, you know, I mean, or has he taken his information from the guys that are bringing the product in?
We got a copy of the bill from Lansing, so.
And that bill was right in regional.
We don't even have to be competitive.
So I use, actually, ours was more-
Have to rate a little higher?
Yeah, ours was actually higher because our sewer rate was higher. So I use the outer town sewer rate. I know some, there's a few houses in town that have septic, but I mean, still, I think if we're getting it pumped out there, I think we charge the higher rate.
So I'm sorry, what was the total fee for that 4,800 gallon load then?
$180.
$180, okay.
And what, we'd be charging 280 that way?
No, that was the total, it was 180.
Okay.
So it was $60.25 for the base rate and then-
Do we need a motion on this to go forward or is it?
I'd like a motion and then at the next meeting I'll have a resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'm asking if your motion includes talking to Decora. I, I mean, I, I understand that we, like, wants to do it. I understand all the pluses. I still want to know why somebody is not doing it, giving all those pluses.
Yeah, and we can, I can get-
Maybe we can get that information before the final approval.
Thanks.
Okay.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yeah.
Alex, just one moment before we move on, talking about Mike and the sewer department. I talked to him today and, and was asking how the process was, everything was going out there and he, you know, happy with the work that's being done. And I'm setting a tour up with him in a couple of weeks ago. And if anybody else is interested, it won't be next week, but the following week, we're going to schedule a day. So if you guys have any interest, I can get it lined up and let you know.
The sooner we can have something on the calendar, that's better.
Yeah, but he, like I said, he's on vacation next weekend. And, uh, let them get a little farther along and then go out and see the progress.
It is pretty interesting to see when the, it was, uh, the clarifier, they had that all down.
Yeah.
And it was pretty interesting to see down inside that because you don't get a good grasp for it when it's filled up, but it's, I'm a nerd too, so.
We went through there before they started it and it, it was interesting, so.
All right. Item number eight, first reading of proposed ordinance number 518 to amend chapter 69.09, sections 01, 02, 03, and adding section 05, 06 in the city of Cresco Court of Ordinances pertaining to parking regulations. Ordinance number 518, parking regulations, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cresco, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to parking regulations being enacted by the city of council of the city of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section 1, sections modified, chapter 69.09, sections 1, 2, and 3, adding sections 5, 6, and 7 in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cresco, Iowa are repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 69.09, truck, trailer, RV, boat, and equipment parking limited. No person shall park a vehicle having a freight capacity greater than one ton or any trailer, farm, equipment, boat, recreational vehicle, or any equipment of any type at any time upon any portion of street except for such reasonable time as may be necessary to load or unload passengers, freight, or other merchandise. The provisions of this section shall not apply to one ton or smaller trucks or vehicles. Number one, business district, except only when such vehicles are actually engaged in delivery or receiving merchandise or cargo. No person shall park or leave such vehicles unattended on any streets within the business district. When actually receiving or delivering merchandise or cargo, such vehicles shall be stopped and/or parked in a manner which will not interfere with other traffic. Number two, residential district, no person shall park or stand or park a vehicle having a capacity greater than one ton except that the, the driver may temporarily stand or park in a residential area for the purpose of and while actually engaged in unloading or loading such vehicle. This provision also applies to any trailer when disconnected from the tractor or from the vehicle meant to pull or tow the trailer. Item number three, noise. This section includes any street, boulevard, right of way, alley, driveway, parking, private parking lots, and public parking lots. No vehicle, no such vehicle or trailer shall be left standing or parked with the engine, auxiliary engine, generator, air compressor, refrigerating equipment, or other device in operation giving off audible sounds and noises except only for between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM while actively loading and unloading the truck or trailer while being used for construction or demolition,